Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, May 3 regular City Council meeting of the city of Bel Air Beach. Before we do the pledge of allegiance, a sad announcement to make. This weekend, a very good friend of mine, a neighbor, long-term resident of Bel Air Beach, passed away. His name is Ron Masara. And if you were here last year, you saw his girls do the -- they performed at the festival. They came here, they were the first people to do the pledge of allegiance. Very suddenly, and it was real tragic. So I'm going to ask that we rise and observe a moment of silence for Ron and for his family and for his children, and keep them in your prayers if you're praying to God, because I know the family would appreciate that. Then we'll do an idea of pledge allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the President and to the citizens of Paris, to the Republic, our Constitution, and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call the law.
Councilmember Robin Aki.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Notera.
Here.
Councilmember Rita Swope.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
City Attorney Fred Riley.
Here.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. First off, the business is due for the agenda. Do I have a motion? Motion by Frank Bankard, by David Gaddis? Any changes?
One.
Yes, Glenn Gunn?
Yes, from the consent agenda, I'd like to pull item number nine.
Item number nine. I'd like to pull number 10 also, just as I say pull, you want to move it to the regular agenda, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So nine and 10, one from you, 10 from me. Anyone else have any possible changes? We'll move first on the -- well, we'll need a motion. Now, Mr. John, you want to make the motion?
Yes, my motion is to go ahead and approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of item line item 9, 10 to the regular agenda.
Great, thank you. And a second? Second by Frank Bankard, any discussion? And we're going to do a vote. This is just for the amendment itself, to amend by removing items nine and 10. All in favor?
Aye.
Right? Anyone opposed? We're now moving item nine and 10. I'm going to take what's 12 right now, and make that 12C, and I'm going to make nine 12A, and 10 is going to be 12B. Now with that, the motion that Frank Bankard had made initially on the approval of the agenda has amended. Anybody else have comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Right, anyone opposed? The agenda is approved, as amended. Next is item two, citizen comments. Everyone has a three-minute presentation on any topic that is not on the agenda. If it's an item that's on the agenda, we'll get to you later on. I promise there will be time for everyone to speak on any agenda item. If you do speak, please come up here and please speak, just like I'm doing right now, about one inch away from the microphone, everyone will be able to hear you. Please give your name and address and address the council. Would anyone like to address council tonight? John Hanzick and then Debbie Mall.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just as an administrative remark here, the city manager and staff did some tweaking on the audio in here, and perhaps people in the back, if you have any problems hearing or if you have any problems?
Here, I'm seeing thumbs up, so a lot of thumbs up on this side, too.
Give us a high sign.
Lot of thumbs up, okay, so, okay, we got it. It sounds good. Okay. Nobody ever has a problem here, John Hanzick. Is that just the Hanzick?
Old drill instructor.
It's not on, there you go.
Old drill instructor. John Hanzick, 22nd Street. I actually have a compliment, which I'll give second, and a complaint, which I'm going to give you first. The complaint is contractors doing all of this utility work on Gulf Boulevard are using the vacant lot at the corner of Gulf and 22nd as a parking lot and a dump. And I say dump because the gentleman who owns the property and is in the process of getting his plans approved for construction comes around about every seven to 10 days to cut his grass, trim the palm trees. Before he can actually cut that lot, the last two times, he's had to pick up cones, tractor cones, and more importantly, empty water bottles and trash. Now, the compliment is to Ajax paving, or excuse me, paving. They completed paving 22nd Bel Air Island Estates, and I observe periodically them doing their job again. Drivers of the dump trucks, well, with old speed limit. The workers manning the equipment and doing the rate meet, hydrating, they picked up after themselves. I'd like them to be told that that was appreciated, and I'd like something to be done about all these contractors. The one in particular I see using quite frequently is that contractor writes, they park their pickup trucks, they go in there, they think that's their place to do their thing. And I know I caught an earful this past weekend from my soon-to-be new neighbor, whenever he gets his plans approved. So it is private property, it's not public property. So something could be said to that contractor or to him as subs, given it most appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanzick. Mr. Reeves, I'm going to refer this to you, if you'll please, if you care to speak about it later during your time, you can. If not, I'd like you to address it directly with Mr. Hanzick and the property law owner. He's correct, this is private property.
Right, thank you.
Debbie Mall.
Hi, I'm Debbie Mall. I live at 115 Coswell Boulevard, and I just wanted to present two things I'd like you to consider. First, it's my understanding that we allow Bel Air Shore to share our contract with Pinellas County Sheriff's. For our upcoming budget discussion this summer, I'd like you to consider having Bel Air Shore contract on their own with the sheriff's. These are my concerns. First, we pay Bel Air -- first, Bel Air Shore pays about 7% of what we pay for our contract. They pay $35,088 a year, I believe, according to their minutes, and we pay $503,808, according to our budget, I believe. Last month, Bel Air Shore had 154 events, as reported at their meeting by the sheriff's department, and we had 717. That means we pay $58.55 per event, while Bel Air Shore paid only $18.98 per event. Bel Air Shore had about 17.68% of the calls, but only paid 7% of the total sheriff's budget. I believe that I read in their minutes, in Bel Air Shore's minutes, that they pay for 45 minutes of sheriff's time. I can't remember if it was per shift or per day, so I'm giving them the benefit of the dollar and cents per shift in my calculations. And they also stated in their minutes that this was not even enough time to do all the house checks that they have scheduled. So not only does this mean that the citizens' tax dollars in Bel Air Beach are subsidizing Bel Air Shore's sheriff's patrol, but that we, the citizens of Bel Air Beach, are actually paying the sheriffs to harass our own citizens who put up umbrellas on our own needed accesses as well as for Florida's public land. I think if our citizens were aware of this, they would not be very happy about it. So I'm asking you all, including our attorney, to look into the legality of this issue and to reconsider this for our next year's budget. In addition, I know that Bel Air Shore is hosting the VC meeting on July 28th at our own City Hall. I'm assuming that we're charging Bel Air Shore for the rental of our community center for this meeting. Since in the past, we have denied our own local Girl Scout troop from using our community center without charge, I think we have significant issues if we allow Bel Air Shore to use our community center for free. So I really would like to see that there's a contract signed for them to use our City Hall. In the past, up to maybe five, eight years ago, we had a good relationship with Bel Air Shore. But many people have moved in and things have changed. We've maintained and upgraded the access in the parking lots, which I don't disagree with doing, except that they allow Bel Air Shore -- Bel Air Shore allows significant numbers of construction vehicles to drive over the gate rails in parking lots, and we witnessed this firsthand. That creates additional wear and tear on the rails and the parking lot that we had to pay for. We drag their homeowners' private beach property. We do that. Heck, even our own city manager had to get homeowners' approval for the Gulf beautification project from their own citizens. Now, I know that we got Pinellas County money for that, but they did as well. So I would just like you guys to look into this for the coming years, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge Shirley, 207 Harrison Avenue. I just want to thank you all for -- or actually, kind of unit some of the reports that were spoken earlier about Ajax paving. They did a great job paving in Harrison Avenue. We had an incident today that I think photos were emailed to all of you all, that we had a concrete truck on Harrison Avenue that dug some pretty deep, you know, divots in the road. I would just say in the future, this is kind of why I've been preaching about impact fees and things such as that, really taking a look at our comp plan, I would say in the future that maybe we don't issue permits during the time we're paving, because, and especially if it's a concrete truck, we kind of reconsider, you know, the time allowance for that asphalt to harden before we allow a concrete truck on the road. So just FYI, take a look at the email, I took photographs, if you guys have time, you might buy there, but just something to consider for the future. Thank you.
Excuse me, was that into the new paving that we did?
Absolutely.
I'm going to refer this to Mr. Reeves and Mr. Riley for follow-up. They did damage to our property, I believe, you can pursue that. I don't know what the circumstances were, but it wasn't -- I'm hearing from Judge Shirley is it wasn't paved like that, so, okay. Any other citizens? Seen your other hands? I'm going to close, citizen comments. Sheriff, are you here to present?
I am, Mayor.
We have Pinellas County Sheriff's officers. Sheriff?
Hi.
Sergeant Switz with Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. For the month of March 2021, for the UCR property and person crime reporting, there was a total of two incidents that were labeled as assaults. I did look those incidents up. One was a domestic battery, and the other one was just a run-of-the-mill battery where the victim didn't want to prosecute. For March of 2021, there were a total of three people arrested. Again, one was for the domestic battery, one was for a warrant, and one was for DUI. For that month also, there were 713 total events, and leading that was traffic enforcement in which 165 traffic stops were conducted. And then, in those 165 traffic stops, a total, well, they must have been traffic stops and parking violations, and 148 citations and warnings were issued, and for citations issued, a total of 10 citations were issued, and the other were parking violations. And then there were some voting stops along the intercoastal waterway also. And then there were two crashes that were investigated in the city, and that is all.
Sheriff, once again, a fine job by the department here. I mean, one of those incidents, sounds like domestic violence, there's just not much to do other than react to it, which it did, it looks like. This is excellent. You know, I'm looking through the year. Year-to-date, we have six incidents in Arnold City. I mean, there's people have six incidents in an hour, so we've got six in the year-to-date. That's fantastic. So congratulations to everyone in the department, and keep up the great work.
And as always, Mayor, I'll pass the one to the other shifts.
Thank you. Anyone else on council? Yes, Glenn Gunn?
Yes, we just heard from Ms. Mall about that, and the relationship is your officers basically manage the Bel Air Shore staff doing the same shit, correctly? Right? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So why can't we look at Bel Air Shore staff compared to ours, and we can track those ones, and kind of get a big picture overview of what's going on between Bel Air Beach and Bel Air Shore, and maybe we can connect the dots on some of the things that Ms. Mall was bringing up. So my recommendation is, in the future, that we get to see the Bel Air Shore staffs at the same time, is that possible?
I would have to look and see when the reporting is sent to us, when we come out and present at the city meetings, but I don't see that it's not possible. I'll pass that along to Captain Lyner to see if there's something that could --
It just makes sense that it's our guy kind of working both areas, so why not wire the two together so we keep the big picture of this thing?
Councilman Dunn, I agree with you. I've actually made that request several months ago, and I know we made it to the sheriff, and I've never seen it. I said, let's see what's happening over there. From an enforcement point of view, you know, we see what's happening sometimes with, you know, enforcement here, but we don't know what's happening over there. And I think some of the residents are, you know, of the impression that, you know, either there's too much enforcement, not enough enforcement, you know, we'd like to see what's going on. I mean, it seems to be, at least these reports, the general reports, seem like they're public record, presenting them. I know you're presenting them in Bel Air Shore, so, you know, we could go and get the minutes, but the minutes typically come out a month or so later. So if you could forward them to us to what the councilman, you know, said, I think that's a great thing. I know that I made that request before to Mall, so, so we'll double that request, because that --
Right, as soon as I leave here, I'll forward the email to Captain Lyner.
Excellent, thank you. I think I'll let the citizens sit here, see what's going on. Other council members? Dave?
Thank you for your service. I think what may help us, you also, is if we just go ahead and do a records request just on those of Bel Air Shore for something last year, and we've got some immediate stats, we can look at maybe either renegotiating based upon the number of calls or something like that, or, you know, split it up. What are the works best to both parties' advantage?
You want someone on council? Does anyone in from the city have any questions for the sheriff? Sheriff, thank you very much again. If you can get back to Ms. Reeves, let us know what the result will be on that, if not, we can do it via records request, I'm sure.
Will do, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move to the consent agenda as amended. So it's going to be items four through eight, and then item 11. I'm approving once, and then we're going to approve them, or not approve. So I'm asking for a motion to bring the consent agenda as a group. So it's item four, the approval of the April 5, 2021, City Council Meeting Minutes; item five, approval of the April 14, 2021, City Attorney Riley Presentation Minutes; item six, approval of April 26, 2021, Special City Council Minutes; item seven, approval of April 26, 2021, City Council Work Session Minutes; item eight, proclamation, 52nd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week; and item 11, City Council Acceptance of Pinellas County 2020 Local Mitigation Strategy, LMS, Annual Progress Report, and the Pinellas County Multi-Jurisdictional Community Rating System, CRS, Annual Report Program for Public Information, Flood Plan Management Plan, Flood Insurance Improvement Plan, and Flood Response Plan. That includes the Countywide Hazard Mitigation Plan. It provides public information and communication regarding flooding, savings of flood insurance purchased through the NFIP. Do I have a motion to approve all of that package? So, Gaddis, Notera, Notera, seconds. There's no discussion on this, we just pass it as a whole, so we're approving items four through eight, as I just read them, and item 11, as I just read. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously?
I'm sorry, let's see.
Good, okay. Seven to zero, passed unanimously, and that completes the consent agenda. We now move to the regular agenda. We have two items that we'll move. The first item was previously item nine, and that's what we're going to do first, it's now item 12A, and that is consideration of accepting the Planning and Zoning Board Code final, review final report. Description is to accept the board's final report for future consideration and action. First, we have a motion. Rita Swope makes the motion. Second? Second, Dave? Yeah, it's discussion.
I'm going to defer to Glenn Gunn.
District Council?
Yes, the only reason I pulled this was because we, at the workshop, we went through the line items and the recommendations, and pretty much hit on all of those, and came up with action items. The only thing that we didn't really come up with a plan of action for was the recommendation about citizen input to prioritizing code enforcement. And what I'd like to do is just make a recommendation. I can work with the city manager and his code enforcement, and this recommendation would kind of align with the city manager's intention later on in the budget process to bring up the reorganization of code enforcement, and how that's going to work. Rather than try to school up another committee on this sort of thing, I think we have the data to probably to make some smart decisions for that. I plan on sitting down with the city manager and Laura in code enforcement, and go through their records and their lists. We get them every month at the council meetings, and just try to characterize what the major players are, and come back with some prioritizations for code enforcement, which kind of segues into some of the other discussion we had about code enforcement. There was some concern about focusing on the wrong things and that sort of thing. Well, what I want to mention is that code enforcement is an important thing for us, because while we haven't gotten into real specifics of what a premier residential community looks like, we basically describe what a premier or what our thoughts about our community should look like in our codes. Our codes are the foundation, the basis for what our community thinks the place should look like. So I just want to say in a way that codes are important, the ordinances support our strategic plan and aesthetics and that, and while we may not specifically say this is exactly what our community should look like in our strategic plan, our codes basically describe what that is, and it's a foundation for how good neighbors work. And while we don't necessarily enforce codes all the time, it is a basis for when somebody thinks somebody's not living up to their obligations as a good neighbor, it gives us a fallback position to enforce that. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
The way I understand this, item nine here, is we're accepting the board's report, but we're not implementing that report. We just had about a two-hour session, as Councilmember Dunn just said. So this is, we've done this before, we accepted for final review. In fact, if anyone read the minutes of the work session, pretty much had most of the concerns that we kind of had consensus on. So each one of those actually represents an ordinance change that has to be changed separately. So there's going to be more debate on this, and I think that's also where your concern, you know, with the code actually comes in. We certainly can prioritize it, so. But we had a very healthy discussion, I think, with that, and, you know, I think we'll probably have more. So I'm fine with, you know, with that understanding. So anyone else on council?
I'd like to back up what Mr. Gunn said. Basically, there was a certain look and feel to Bel Air Beach that drew us all here. And I know that sometimes code makes us angry, and we want to try to change things and tear down for our own purposes, but at the end of the day, the more of it that we remove, the less it becomes Bel Air Beach, and it becomes some other town that we moved away from. So I'm hoping that everyone is understanding, as we go through this code, that not picking on anyone, we're just trying to make sure that we're that premier city that everyone loved whenever they first came here. That's all I can say.
Anyone on council? Citizens, any comments? Back to council, the last one to Rita Swope.
I'm getting a couple questions.
Okay. So now as item, then revise item 12A, and it's consideration of accepting the Planning and Zoning Board Code Final Report, Final Report. Yes, vote will accept the code's final report for future consideration and action. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes seven to zero. We have taken what was item 10, and it's now 12B, and that's consideration of approval of the local option fuel tax inter-local agreement.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Did we skip number eight?
No, eight was part of the, eight was part of the consent agenda.
It wasn't really discussed.
It's not, because it's consent agenda, but it will be discussed, I have a feeling, when we get to Patty's part of the show. I'll say something. And we actually have a little honor incoming for the city clerks that are from Mayor's Council, so, yeah, we're getting that over here. That's, just so everybody knows, that's the honoring the municipal clerks week, and so that's what we're really doing here. We may just make a proclamation, which is in the packet, and, but later on, we get to Patty's section, have some stuff, I think, probably to say to you. Okay, so we're on item 10 now. This is consideration of approval of the local option fuel tax inter-local agreement. First, a motion. So, Dave Gaddis? Second?
Second.
Second by Robin Aki. Dave?
I actually read through this, and even though it's a 5 cent, the potential for a 5 cent tax, I saw opportunity for our town. Not so much with the fines, but as a way that maybe we should go to Ford Pinellas and sort of lobby to raise our concerns about what's going on with our traffic, how it's not only affecting us, but it's also affecting Bel Air Shore and also Bel Air Bluff more than anyone else. It's these three communities. We're in a sort of unique position compared to all the other towns in Pinellas County. Most of these, most of these cities have direct access to have, I would call them, premium vacation spots, and that would be Clearwater Beach and St. Pete Beach. No one is required to go through another town to get to these cities. They can ride off the interstate or ride off Highway 60. We are a little bit different, because as soon as traffic backs up, Google says, go that way, go through Bel Air Beach, it's faster. And what I've noticed is whenever Gulf Boulevard stops, Google says, go down 19, head up Bay Shore, make a left, and then you'll be ahead of five cars that you were behind five minutes ago. I hate that this is happening, and really, I believe that the only real fix would be a bridge going over to San Pete, basically, from Clearwater over to San Pete. Even if someone said, let's do this, let's get started tomorrow, we're talking 10 to 20 years before anything like that would ever happen. So basically, what I recommend is that, even though it's too late now, we should get the three communities together and in a joint effort approach, Ford Pinellas, and say, we think we should get a little bit more than what you're giving us, and instead of taking it from everyone, you should take it from Clearwater, because at the end of the day, there are clear waters in this whole situation. Tonight, I'm going to, I'm going to vote yes on this, because basically, if it doesn't go through, which it's a little too late now to get started on this, then there's no chance for an increase at all. We get .09%, is that right?
Yes.
You know, at this point, I'll take it. I think it's worth it, even though gas costs more now, I just see all the people coming in, and I see a potential for more revenue for this city. So I think in the next year, I'm going to work with everyone here and the other two neighboring cities, and see if we can do something about this, and maybe have the rates readjusted. Thank you.
Dave, the reason why I had asked to move this into this, into the regular agenda instead of consent agenda, is the rate itself. I think it's pathetic. .09%. That means we're getting less than a penny out of every dollar that's collected on this tax. We're paying 5 cents a gallon, but we're getting basically nothing back. To give you an idea, kind of dovetails a little bit with what Vice Mayor said, Clearwater gets 6.69%, St. Petersburg gets 15.3%, Pinellas Park gets 3 percent. And of course, this is the county's tax, so they get 60 percent. I mean, we're doing the heavy lifting, we're taking the heavy traffic, we're getting nothing. So I'm not going to vote for this tonight. And the only reason also that I'm not going to vote for it is we're not going to see how the methodology was calculated. There's nothing in this paperwork here that shows how they came up with these numbers. There's no computation, there's nothing that I can check back to see that they did their due diligence. And they're asking us to sign off on what, you know, promises to be an interlocal agreement without giving us any real support for how they came up with their numbers in any group. So not quite sure. Glenn, it looks like you want to say so.
Mayor, the percentages are calculated just by population. And I verified that again today. And it's the 60% of most of the county, the 40% is divided on the rest of the cities in the county. And that's divided based on population.
We have to check that to make sure that their calculations are correct, right? And we don't know if it's the population pre-sensus or post-sensus, right?
No, I don't know the exact number, I can't tell you that. But this is an interlocal agreement. You know, it's typically run in 10-year cycles. And we get the local option gas tax, everyone. And it's, all the cities are sharing it.
Yes, well, some are sharing a little more than others, that's why.
Well, based on the population, from what the county is telling.
But I'm the side with, well, I've been on traffic for a lot here and it's not getting any better. There's no solutions. You know, I've met multiple times with county people that given us a couple of things, but it's not making that big of a difference really, not from what I can see. And, you know, a bridge, sure, it'll take 15 years, but you might want to start it now because I can't even imagine. You know, one of the things last year before COVID hit, in the Mayor's Council, they were talking about the visit Clearwater-St. Pete group was so happy that they were, they'd gotten the word out to everyone in the country. And they were showing us billboards in Boston and New York City and stuff. And they said, well, now that we've done that, of course, it was right before COVID, they said, now we're going to focus on getting the people within the state to start coming here. So that's where they're going with this. They want more day triggers coming over from, you know, mainland and from the inner portions of Florida. So I think whatever we have now, maybe looking back at these being the good old days, if they get their bridge. So just something to think about. So I personally would like to see some more information, that's my feeling. And other councilmembers, right?
Yeah. The problem I have with this, these penny-pinching fuel taxes I've experienced for four years. They seem to want to go to the right place, but they never end up going there. The other thing is, we have a federal government right now, it's really pushing electric cars, electric vehicles. They're not going to pay us salaries. And I've asked numerous states, senators, legislators, because I came from the construction world, most of the money for highway usage comes from the gas taxes, right? These electric cars, partial electric cars, we're not getting any revenue from. They still tear up the roads, they still tear up the bridges. What are we going to do to replace that lost revenue? If Biden gets his way, why new trucks want to be a relic? I mean, why do we put the other headgays? All right, this could be a tax of nothing, all right? How much is it really going to save us and how much is it really going to do us? I agree with you, Council, we need a bridge from San Key, but I won't let you see it. And I'm not, I'm not old. But it just won't happen my lifetime. So I'm dead against this penny-pinching. You come from the state of New Jersey, okay?
Yeah.
Had the lowest gas link pass three years, Senator Swinney put in a 25 cent, and it went nowhere.
And I was just ratty the roads of New Jersey. And I mentioned to June, I said, the roads are as bad as they've ever been, but the taxes are higher than they've ever been. So you're right, Glenn, you're right. And Rita Swol?
Ah, yes, my question is to the city manager. So if we don't pass this, we get nothing, right? Is that how it works at this point? Because there's no negotiating, I don't feel like at this point in the process, it's too late. So if we don't vote for this, we just absolutely get nothing?
Well, we currently have an interlocal agreement on the existing. All this is doing is giving the county, the county is telling us we will share in the five cent if they implement it. If they don't implement it, which is, they've got until October to implement. But what the county administrator has is to get the interlocal agreement approved. So if it is implemented, then at least going forward, we're going to get part of it. But at the current time, I don't know if not doing this because we are still under the other. This is just a...
And I, I'm sorry, can I add something quickly? I think that it doesn't require 100% approval. I think that it's a majority. I don't know what that number is, but I believe that's what I read. Is that some people may not sign it and either way, they'll still get it if it's approved.
That was actually done to my next question, so thank you, Vice Mayor.
Glenn Dunn?
Personal political opinion aside, I think that the day of reckoning for electric vehicles are coming. I mean, that subject is getting a lot of visibility now, exactly what you're saying. But political, personal political opinion aside, I ask what's best for the city of Bellerin Beach. And if that provides $1 more than what we have in our budget now, and I am all for supporting this thing, we can go back and try to negotiate a higher rate. But why, why would we turn down money coming into the city of Bellerin Beach? That makes no sense whatsoever. If it's $1 more than what we had yesterday, I am all for it. And we need to get smart about this. Fees are the way to go. And as it showed in the presentation from Pinellas County, one-third of that money comes from nonresidents. So, I mean, these are all, these are all the people coming down on spring break or on vacation or the snowbirds or whatever. They're not necessarily homestead residents, but they're bringing money in and we should take advantage of it. But to just cut off our noses, spite our face makes no monetary sense whatsoever. Thank you.
Someone correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I read it is we're going to get that tax whether we approve it or not. I think this, I think this whole...
If the county approves, yes.
Yeah, I think this whole thing should go back to county's committee and have it retooled. I think it's unfair that we take the burden of the traffic. Electric vehicles, I'm not getting political, but it's a fact of life. They're here and they're here to stay. I just don't think we should jumble in this and say bravo to the county for passing it. And we get some of it.
Dave? I'll go and then you go, yeah. So you don't negotiate contracts after he's signed them. You negotiate it before he's signed them. This is before we signed it. We don't have to sign this today. The county hasn't passed this, it's not even on their agenda right now. They have until October. It's incumbent on us, there's been at least two, possibly three, the reeves woke raised a question as to what happens if we don't do it, we can get a good answer to that. So go back to the county, you can find out. They have county commissioners meeting every single month. And be it a representative from our council or our city manager goes there, or a legal representative writes a letter to them and we square this away. This is negotiable right now, maybe. We can ask. The worst they could say is no. I'm not, this is, to sign this, it's what's known as a contract of adhesion. Sign it or else. Uh-huh, we're not in that position right now. Sure, I'll take the money. But you said something, Councilmember Dunn, that one-third is paid by the outside people. Means two-thirds paid by the inside people. That's me, that's the people that I'm looking at out here. And if you're going to pay two-thirds of this tax, I want you to get more than a penny.
It's not a tax.
One second, don't interrupt. It is a tax, it's a tax, it's a fuel tax. So it's, if you're going to get more than one penny on every dollar that the county collects, I just think that's a pathetic return for us. And it's always the same cities that are benefiting on this. Yet, you're right, we get the wear and tear and it destroys our quality of life. Some of these other cities aren't experiencing that same problem. Eight yes.
One of the reasons why there's dates matter, yes, they have to have it completely, they have to complete it by October. However, I think that there's a flow of processes that must occur and they're looking for a June 1 deadline on every month. Is that right, Glenn?
Yes. Dave? County asked all the city managers to take this to our council and give it back to us by May 25. And that's where we're going. And that was from the county administrator.
And they said, basically, the state of Florida would not allow it if it goes beyond a certain date. Also, I'd like to address the electric vehicle. It's capitalism. Basically, what's going to happen is eventually these convenience stores are not going to be able to sell fuel. What's going to happen, they're going to install electric fuel pumps. So if you think they're just going to give it away, it's not going to happen. It's going to be another form of fuel and we will be taxed on that also. So yeah, during the transition, you're going to have, just like we have right now, you're going to have gas, you're going to have electric, and little by little, it'll be more and more electric. But all of these convenience stores are going to have to step up. And whenever that happens, if any of us think that Pinellas County and the state of Florida are not going to cash in on that opportunity, you know, that's something maybe you should reconsider.
I agree with you, Councilman Simmons, Vice Mayor. But I dealt with it, oil lobby for years. And I come from an area where natural gas floors, and you didn't see no natural gas pumps in the southern part of the state and that like that. And now we're just really restricting the natural gas pipelines, okay? A lot of these electric cars, we go in there and charge them free right now. There's one in Eni-Rox Beach, or there's a couple in Eni-Rox Beaches at airports and everything. And I agree with you, one day, someone's going to say we have to put a tax on it. But that tax isn't today. I really believe the county is trying to get all the communities that approve this to say, oh, everybody wants to do this, so let's vote. This needs to be retooled.
Any other council members? Let's open this up to the citizens. Citizens, any comments? Seeing no comments, I'm bringing it back to council for final word. Okay, then I'm going to, I'm going to do this via, I'm not going to do this via voice vote. I want the votes recorded on this one. So item 10, which has now been revised, item 12B, is consideration of approval of the local option fuel tax interlocal agreement. And the description is approval of the agreement between Pinellas County and Pinellas County municipalities for the administration expenditure of the proceeds. Yes, vote will approve that and bring it to county. Madam Clerk, please call it all.
Councilmember Rita Swol?
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Glenn Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Frank Banker?
No.
Councilmember Robinaki?
No.
Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Joseph Manzo?
No.
So the pass is for three. Mr. Reeves, you go forward with the county, please let them know that I'll sign it, and I guess. Okay, back to our regular agenda, item C, that's 12, bust 12, now it's on item 12C. This is, was an item that was deferred from last month, and I see some of the individuals are back. Consideration of appointments to the citizen advisory committee. City council is going to vote by ballot to appoint up to five members to that council. We have five, one, two, three, six, people up for consideration. Ron Zaganic, Mark Goldman, John Hansick, John J. Hayes, Robert Reisberg, and Joey Shirley. First, I just need a motion for consideration of this group of individuals. Do I have that?
So...
Dave Gaddis? Second? Robinaki? Get any comments before I open it to floor?
I'd just like to thank everyone for signing up and nominating themselves.
With that said, obviously, our thanks for coming out to do this and coming out actually for the second time. Is there, what we typically will do is allow anyone who wishes to speak in their own support or in support of another person to come up. And of course, you can say something against a person too, just let's keep it polite here. If we could, keep it factual based. So with that said, I see some individuals in the audience, would anyone like to address council? I have, Mark, I don't think you're on this one. I have you on the next one. Mark Goldman, I think, right? Mark is on this? Wait, hang on, hang on one second, wait a second. Mark Bean is on number 13, I don't see him on number 12, so...
No, I'm not on that group.
Okay, that's fine. So we have, I have Mark Goldman, then we'll go with you, okay? Go ahead.
Good evening, council. Mayor and residents that chose to attend this evening. I'm Mark Goldman, I'm a resident for almost 21 years now. And spent about two years on the undergrounding committee, trying to get that project completed and happy to announce that it was completed. And quite satisfactorily. If anybody doubts what the finished product looked like, take a ride down any of the streets on the Bellerin Island Estates and you'll see what can happen in your part of the city as well. We did, during that timeframe, set up a framework for any other streets or groups of streets in the city to take advantage of the same processes that we use. So I urge you to get with your folks and if you like what you see, then we'll help you get there as well. The, my interest in wanting to be on the committee is because I think that we need more citizens input into what's going on in the city. And this is a great forum for us to get into the ground roots, see the things that are coming about in the future. So I'm offering to do my time here. One more thing I just wanted to say is that the success of the Bellerin Island Estates undergrounding project is very, very much because of the amazing effort from Minries. His negotiation skill, his work with the contractors and the project managers was just outstanding. And he told us what he could do and he delivered. And he got it done for under budget. And I know that those people who are getting refunds are very happy about that. So thank you for the city for allowing the work that Glenn did. And I look forward to being on the committee in the future.
Thank you. Mark Bean?
Mark Bean, Louie Driver. I think what you should do as a council is actually have all six people on it. Because there are times that you might find one person not being able to make it and the other person can fill in. But since six, when I had them, said, okay, I want to do this for the city, I think you should totally have to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? See no other hands? Council, any, yes, sorry, wait, hey, I'm on my outside right now. Anyone else? Okay, then I'm bringing it back to council, Glenn Dunn.
Yes, sir, based on that statement, I would like to propose an amendment to this where we choose five primary members and one alternate. And the reason behind that is to have five, a hot number, who can conduct business. And yet, these are very busy people, they have other careers, and they are volunteering their time to assist us. They bring a lot of skill sets to us and a lot of acumen, business acumen. And we need to take advantage of all of them. So if somebody's out of pocket traveling or called away by other duties and business or whatever, we have the alternate who can also slip in and help them do business. So that's my amendment. I propose an amendment, five primaries.
I don't know that I can accept your amendment right now, and I'll tell you why. This was, the formation of the committee was passed, as I recall, last time, and that was passed by ordinance or resolution? I don't remember whether it was, we passed it either way, whether it's ordinance or resolution.
It is an ordinance.
Okay, I think it was. And I think we have to change it via that, that would be an improper change. So we can do that, and there's nothing that says we can't use, you know, a person doesn't, we need four votes to get on this committee. But we, there's nothing saying that we cannot amend that, that we have to amend it the proper way for an ordinance. I don't think we could just add it. So it's a great suggestion, and I don't think I want to lose the people either. But, you know, let's do it the right way here for the remainder.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Yep, correct. Give me a thumbs up, Fred Riley? Yes, okay. All right, other council comments?
Do you need a table? One second.
No, I don't think so. I think we can move, I, that, everybody wants to move, I'll just take the consensus. Everybody wants to move forward with getting individuals on, and if, you need, in order for this to happen, our, our pool, so you have to have four votes. So it is, you're going to vote for up to five members. You can vote for zero, one, two, one, two, five. Um, if anybody gets four votes, is on. Anyone else is, come back, and we can amend this, but we're going to need two meetings before we can amend that ordinance. So it might be a little bit of, you know, it might be two months before we do it, but I don't think that's a bad idea. Actually, we kind of missed that one. We probably should have had alternates in there, but we got the committee, so we'll amend it. Patty, do you have ballots to pass out? Or do you want the ones, the ones that we have in here in our books?
They're at your seat. Uh, there's a, there's one at your seat.
It's one at our seat?
Yes.
Okay. So I have. There it is. Okay. Council, we're going to take it to vote at this point. Um, when you're ready, we'll have it to Patty. Vote for up to five, okay? Lynn Reeves, will you co-tally this list? And I'm going to try to do it, and you'll do it to make sure our members manage it. Patty, if you could just go through relatively slowly, because Lynn and I are both recording this, and if you take it in the order that the names are on the sheet here, that would be great, but it doesn't really matter, but go slow enough, we'll get all.
Councilmember Aki voted for Mr. Seganek, Mr. Hansick, Mr. Risper, and Ms. Shirley. Councilmember Bankard voted for Mr. Seganek, Mr. Goldman, Mr. Hansick, Mr. Risper, and Vice Mayor Gaddis voted for Mr. Seganek, Mr. Goldman, Mr. Hansick, Mr. Risper, and Ms. Councilmember Gunn voted for Mr. Seganek, Mr. Goldman, Mr. Hayes, Mr. Risper, and Ms. Councilmember Notaro voted for Mr. Seganek, Mr. Goldman, Mr. Hansick, Mr. Hayes, and Ms. Shirley. Mayor Manzo voted for Mr. Hansick, Mr. Hayes, and Mr. Risper.
Thank you, so, what I have, I'm going to just go down by the totals here. Lynn, I'm sorry.
I have one more.
Oh, we have one more? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Swope voted for Mr. Seganek, Mr. Goldman, Mr. Hayes, Mr. Risper, and Ms. Shirley.
Okay, that's a lose vote, right?
Yes.
All right, so I have five, six votes for Ron Seganek, if you're on the committee, congratulations. We have one, two, three, five votes for Mr. Goldman, correct, Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
You're on the committee, congratulations. I have five votes for John Hansick, you're on the committee, congratulations. I have four votes for John Hayes, he's on the committee, congratulations.
No, you, mayor.
No?
No.
I have Notaro, Gunn, Swope, and you.
No, the next two you have more votes for.
Okay, I'm, all right, all right. Six votes for Mr. Ron, Ron Reisber- Robert Risper, correct? And six votes for Jody Shirley. So Ron Seganek, Mark Goldman, John Hansick, Robert Risper, and Jody Shirley comprise the committee with, if we can do this alternate, I mean, like, we're going to still have to do another vote, but the alternate person would be John Hayes. Okay, everyone, thank you. Congratulations. Okay, item thirteen, consideration of appointment of Mark Bean to be board of adjustment. This is council's consideration for appointment of a board member. Uh, this is inactive seat, right? This is not an alternate position, correct?
Correct.
Look at this, right? Yes, okay. Do I have a motion?
I'm, uh, Leslie Notaro, second.
Second.
Uh, go with Dave Gaddis. Uh, any council comments?
Uh, I think that, uh, Mark would be a great board member. Whenever I, I first moved here, he came over and gave me advice, uh, for some things at my own property, and he was very knowledgeable, and, uh, I wanted to see him get to work.
Mr. Bean, would you like to speak on your own behalf?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure?
Yeah.
Thanks. I have, uh, I have the boss here on the planning of the Board of Adjustment. Mr. Kelly?
Mike Kelly, Hibiscus Drive. Mark has already served on Board of Adjustment with us prior to becoming a council member, so I strongly endorse his return and hope as an active member, he steps right in with training already done, just like Dave just said. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Any other citizens? Back to council. I have a question for you, Mr. Bean. Why? I'm just kidding. Two months he was retired. I said to stay retired. Uh, I think you have our endorsement, so. Anyone else in council? I'm going to do this with the voice, voice vote. Uh, this is to put Mark Bean, uh, on the Board of Adjustment. A yes vote puts him on. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye, aye. Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Nay, we have one nay, so six to one. Rita Swope is the nay. Six to one, Mark Bean, you're on. Congratulations. Mike, are you full now? Just give me a thumbs up. He's giving me a thumbs up, so the Board of Adjustment is full now.
Mayor, there's still missing two alternates, Patty?
Alternates, right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll have another alternate application next one.
Excellent. Okay. Um, right now, all right. Okay, item fourteen, consideration of appointment of Park and Recreation Board alternate member Nora Kodak, board member. This is council's consideration of appointment of a board member. Um, she was an alternate, so it's, we're going to bring her on to the regular board. Do I have motion?
So.
All right, and second? Sorry, Dave Gaddis. Uh, council comments? Is Ms. Kodak here? Would you like to speak?
I'm present.
Oh, no.
I'm in Ossie, Second Street. I moved here with my husband and my two children about a year ago. However, my mother's lived here for twenty years, so this has always been kind of a side of home for me. Um, I'm really excited to live, this should be a part of the community, and really excited to be on the board, so it's going to be a lot of fun and exciting, so thank you both for your time and your consideration.
Welcome, full time, and, uh, thank you for working on the, on the board so far. Hopefully, we get down to full board here in a couple minutes.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Back to council. Let's bring it up for a vote. So this is for consideration of appointment of Park and Recreation Board alternate member Nora Kodak, who we just heard from, to a full board member. A yes vote accomplishes that. I'm going to take a voice vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seven to zero. Congratulations, Ms. Kodak, to the full board. Okay, next is item fifteen. This is consideration of resolution two thousand and one dash zero four. It's a resolution in the City Council of the City of Belle Eyre Beach, Florida, establishing an audit committee, providing for membership of the audit committee, providing for the selection of a chair, providing for duties and responsibilities thereof, providing for meetings, and providing for an effective date. This is consideration to establish a committee for review of city annual financials, internal controls, and compliance policies and procedures. We deferred this from last time. Um, first motion.
So.
Dave Gaddis, second. Leslie Notaro is raising her hand. Okay.
I figured something needed. We've discussed this in the past, and I am hopeful of getting more.
I have a procedural question, and, uh, I'm sorry, I can't reach out to you earlier, Mr. Riley. I hate to blindside you, so if you need an adjournment, uh, I know, I'm sorry to do this, but there's no other way, unfortunately, but the rules can have to play by. Um, so the audit committee is specified under state statutes, under Florida two eighteen dash three nine one, and it calls for it to be an audit committee. What is being proposed here is to basically take the citizens advisory committee that we just appointed and add one council member to it, and make that the audit committee. Now, historically, we have had, I wouldn't say a prohibition, but we discourage people from serving on two boards. In fact, if you're on Board of Adjustment and you're on the planning board, you're actually prohibited from serving on two boards. It's not clear with regard to the, uh, the Parks and Rec Board and some of the other boards, but, um, it's what we typically follow. So what I'm throwing to you is, I just want to make sure, because the penalty, if we don't do this right, is an invalidation, not that we're going to challenge it, but perhaps losing water might challenge it. So the process has to be proper. So what I'm asking you is, based on the proposal that's here, which is to utilize the, uh, the citizens advisory committee plus one council member, is that going to work in terms of statute two eighteen dash three nine one?
Yes.
That's all I need to know.
But I'll give you a better answer than that.
That's a great answer.
I reviewed the statute, and the principal requirement is you need one person from the governing body, which would be one of the seven of you, and that the, I also reviewed the code provisions related to the citizens advisory committee. There's no prohibition like in one or two of the other committees, so since it's not prohibited, it's permissible, and it comes down to a, uh, discussion among the city council members in implementing this, if this is advisable from your perspective or not.
Is this considered an ad hoc committee under the terms of our charter?
I would say it is.
So under an ad hoc committee, the presiding?
Well, it, this is a committee that's based on a statute, so I, I would say that this, the statute requires a minimum of three people, and one of the three has to be a elected official. So that, that's really the, the ground rules you have to comply with.
The only reason why I ask is in terms of appointment for the presiding officer of the committee and for appointment and, uh, recommendation of a council member, is an ad hoc committee, it's done one way, the presiding officer, if it's a regular committee, it's done the other way.
The, the statute, I believe it's two eighteen, four three nine one, two, um, references the elected official, and the elected official would be the, I believe, would be the chairman of the, this committee.
I think what we have in here, if I remember reading it, is that.
Nope.
Hang on, Lynn, say whatever you just said to him.
No, what, the, the requirement, the elected official isn't the chairman, it's selected by the group, but there has to be an elected official on it. It's, it's been a change. Five years ago, when we went for an auditor, this wasn't in existence evidently, and this staff did it. Well, now, the statutes require that an elected official participate in this committee. Some cities have two or three members of, if they have a planning committee. Uh, and I think the simplest way is to use the citizens advisory committee and select a council member to be part of that committee. Our R and RFP, just FYI, is on the street right now. Uh, I believe it's the nineteenth due act as, so they'll have to review that shortly after.
Do you have a council comment? Leslie?
I just wanted to clarify something.
It seems with Mike, I can't even hear it.
I just wanted to clarify something. It says in here that the committee members elect the chair. The member of the council that's on the committee does not automatically become the chair of the committee. Is that correct?
That's what the, um, this says, yes.
I'm assuming it's in, it's correct under the statute.
The statute requires the elected official, and I may have misspoken.
Just to be on the committee, but the chairman of the committee doesn't have to be an elected official.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
When do we intend to appoint the council representative? That's not even here. Mr. Riley, is that an acceptable add? If I can get the council to, uh, I mean, there's only seven of us here that are in the running. We're all here tonight to speak on our own behalf. There's, can, if I can get a amendment to this, and then we can make that for tonight?
You can.
Okay. So do, so, will somebody like to amend this to have that we will appoint the council representative this evening? And number fifteen, we can bring it back. Glenn Dunn is raising his hand.
I'll, I'll make a motion for amendment to amend this, so that we go ahead and, and seek a, a council member, whether it's a volunteer or a, or a, or a, or a.
Do I have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Second, Dave Gaddis. Any conversation, discussion on the amendment? We're going to vote on the amendment then. The amendment is simply to leave number fifteen intact the way it is, except that we will appoint the council member tonight or, um, get a volunteer tonight from the council, so that we fully staff this committee. We have the rest of it done, and let this way we can move forward with the committee. So a yes vote will move this thing forward. Take this via voice vote. All in favor of the amendment only? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so we're going to make the appointment tonight with the council. Do we have any other discussion on the, uh, on the, or questions regarding item fifteen from the council? Citizens? Back to council. Uh, final word, Dave Gaddis?
Aye, nothing.
Okay, that would call it. So this is consideration of resolution, and then we'll, we'll look at the appointment if this passes, we'll do the appointment right afterward, and we'll, so, um, we've got you to both appointments, just to make it formal. Um, consideration of resolution twenty twenty one oh four, resolution to the City Council of the City of Belle Eyre Beach, Florida, establishing an audit committee, providing for membership of the audit committee, providing for the selection of the chair, providing for duties and responsibilities thereof, providing for meetings, and providing for an effective date. A yes vote establishes this committee. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed?
Mayor? Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, can I get a, a roll call on this?
Sure, of course.
Okay.
Okay, so that votes invalid, we're going to go to roll call, then, Mark.
Councilmember Bankard?
Aye.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Notaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye. So it's still fast, seven to zero, and so the, uh, the committee has been established, um, now to appoint everyone. So the, we've already said that the citizens advisory committee is going to make up these spots, so five members will be sitting on this. We now seek for, uh, anyone who must nominate themselves or send someone bells on the council. It's going to be council, I'll, I'll nominate myself, folks. Uh, and I'm doing it simply because of my background. So I have, uh, I'm a CPA, inactive. I've been so since nineteen eighty-two, worked for Deloitte, and, uh, I've worked with owners for many years in both, like, to pass as accounting manager at Southern Corporation of American, which is in transit, and also privately as a CPA. Um, I was active until I went to law school, when I became an attorney. But I still have an inactive license, so I'm actually a licensed CPA, I just don't practice anymore. Um, and I can't practice officially, but I can renew that license. So I have quite a bit of experience in this, and I'd love to get, uh, get it to the city to help you out on this one. Who else?
I would like to nominate, uh, Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
I would like to nominate Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Any other nominations? Will you call, you want a poll vote? Is that the best way to do this? We need four. Yes?
Can you nominate from out here?
I don't know. Can you nominate from out there? Nominations come from the council. I'm an ad hoc, not a regular committee. Ask you if it was an ad hoc. Kind of like a draft.
Yeah, they need to come from y'all.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You, you just set, did an amendment where you, as a council, stated the, or amended the resolution so that you would name one of the seven of you to be the elect, to be the representative. So, I would say the, the resol, or the, the nomination needs to come from the council, not from the citizens at large.
I will open it up if anyone wants to speak for or against from the floor.
No, I was, I, I'm in line with that. Still opening it up to six.
Absolutely.
I was making up their nomination.
Right.
Some thoughts?
Joseph Shirley.
Jody Shirley, two oh seven Harrison Avenue. I just, I know that Glenn Dunn has had a lot of experience in the past on budgeting and assisting with strategic planning, and I would love to see him as a member of the committee. Those are my only words. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the citizens? Bring it back to council.
I'll, I'll nominate Glenn Dunn.
Glenn, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, sir.
Now have three individuals in the running for this. Anyone else? We need four votes. Madam Clerk? We have Leslie Notaro, Glenn Gunn, and myself. The vote, please.
Councilmember Bankard?
Glenn Gunn?
Councilmember Gunn?
Glenn Gunn.
Councilmember Notaro?
Leslie Notaro.
Councilmember Swope?
Uh, Councilmember Notaro.
Councilmember Aki?
Joe Manzo.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Glenn Gunn.
Mayor Manzo?
Joseph Manzo. We have three votes for Glenn Dunn, two votes for me, and two votes for Leslie Notaro, so we do not have a winner. You all wish to withdraw? Then we do not have a winner. We need four votes.
I will withdraw.
Glenn Dunn withdraws. Second vote. Leslie Notaro and myself.
Councilmember Bankard?
Leslie Notaro.
Councilmember Gunn?
Leslie Notaro.
Councilmember Notaro?
Leslie Notaro.
Councilmember Swope?
Leslie Notaro.
Councilmember Aki?
Joe Manzo.
Joe Manzo.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Vice Mayor Notaro.
Mayor Manzo?
Joseph Manzo. So, votes five to two, Leslie Notaro with the council representative. This committee convenes immediately, Mr. Reeves, or like within a month?
Yes, uh, excuse me. Uh, as soon as we get the audit back, or audit, our P back, we'll compile them and get them to the committee, 'cause that would be their purpose.
When will we make the decision on council? When is that expected?
Well, they'll review the proposals. They'll make a recommendation to the, to the council, and after that's done, then they will shortlist, depending on the number of people. And then, the shortlist will come to the city council and make the final decision.
Do you have an estimated date for that?
It's really gonna depend on how many, I, I'm hoping in, uh, right now, I think the date I've got is, I'm hoping for the July first week meeting to do the presentations. Just depending on how many we get, and how fast that needs to come in together, too.
And this fee will be integrated into our new audit and to our new budget, correct?
Yes, yeah, yeah. It's, well, it's not for the new budget, it's for the current new budget. They will audit this.
No, I'm talking about their fee, because we have a new mapping.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Because that may change.
We're gonna know those proposals with the RFPs.
Okay. So, as long as you're prepared. Okay. Wonderful. Anybody else have any questions? Move to item sixteen. Recap of the Florida League of Cities twenty twenty one Institute for Elected Municipal Officials. It's called EMO two. Councilmember Gunn requested this. This is a recap of key learning points, recommendations, and best practices. First, let's just cut a motion. Ed Gaddis? Second?
Second.
Glenn Dunn? Ed Gaddis, do you want to give the floor? Is it Glenn Dunn? Yes, there you go. Glenn Dunn, give the floor.
On, uh, April twenty-third through the twenty-fourth, I attended the, the second, uh, training revolution for the Institute of Elected Municipal Officials. It was held over Daytona. It's a, a gathering of maybe thirty, forty people from the different municipalities, and the Florida League of Cities brings in special speakers and that sort of thing. It serves as a great basis for networking with other municipalities and sharing experiences, as well as, uh, best practices and that sort of thing. They had some very good speakers with a lot of municipal governing experience as city managers, as financial directors, in human behavior, that sort of thing. There were only four major topics that they discussed during this time. One was effective council techniques, group dynamics, decision-making models. Media relations was a pretty good one. The second, second was on planning, growth, and management. Basically, uh, planning and zoning and comprehensive plans for the city. The, the third topic was advanced revenue and finances for cities. And it was interesting, because the guest speaker and the leader of those discussions was a fellow by the name of Kimball Adams, who is actually the finance director for our neighboring sister city of Largo here. And he works on the board of directors with the Florida League of Cities, and has a lot of, uh, experience as an adjunct professor with the Florida South, Florida's South University, that sort of thing. And the, the last thing was building your city's team personnel labor issues. Obviously, some of this stuff didn't apply necessarily to us, but it was a great opportunity and just a, I think they bring up some, some thinking. I'll just hit on some of the topics. Vice Mayor also attended, and he may have a different perspective. By all means, chime in, Vice Mayor. What do you think? Is there something I missed? One of the things we picked up on right away was, uh, less than half the cities in Florida have term limits. It was interesting, because we just went through this with our charter review. And it was interesting, because some of the cities that don't have term limits are working hard to get them, and then other cities that do have term limits are, are working hard to deliver them. So, it was just kind of an interesting take on how things were going. And obviously, the, uh, the, the two competing thoughts are, well, you know, you don't want to get stagnant, people in there and saying ideas all the time. You want to get fresh ideas and fresh blood in there, while at the same time, you may not have interest in, in the people or the community to come forward and, and take on the roles and responsibilities as an elected official. So, that was just a good, good thing there. The, uh, the use of workshops to build teams and, uh, or governing, improving the dynamics. The takeaway from that is, what we see and, uh, witness here in our own groups is, is nothing new. All the cities and municipalities go through the same thing. You get heated, passionate, outbursts, you have very heated discussions. Some nights, you walk away saying, boy, I wish I hadn't said that. And, uh, there are other nights when you say, that was a good night, and we accomplished a lot. So, it was interesting hearing all of these things. Interestingly, the big cities, the little cities, what you find is, they all have the same issues, the same problems. The only thing that changes are the, the names of the people involved and the dollar values of the, the issues of the projects. It was very interesting. Some of the best practices, I'll just hit on real quickly. Managing the, uh, the council agenda to be strategic. Develop those things at the workshop, have the discussions, come up with a consensus and a plan, so that when you get into things like the regular council session, it's just one item after the other, you, you kind of know. And if there's, there's some extra thought or something like that, you can carry on and expedite business. One concept that's going on, uh, is, as you see the changing dynamics on our journalism and, uh, social media, the interaction of news reporting, that sort of thing, cities are more and more becoming their own news source. And they're doing that with their websites, they're doing that with social media. So, that's, that was just a best practice, I was figuring right from there. So far as the comp plan, the comp plan establishes the, the public interest for us, and it was very interesting how closely that aligned with the strategic plan. The, the, the biggest thing there is the comp plan is more narrowly focused. However, the strategic plan basically sets the same, like, what's, what's the vision for the city, what are the goals, what are the objectives, how are we going to get there? So, the comp plan is supposed to be reviewed every seven years, and I believe we're probably coming up pretty close. But I think, uh, the existing comp plan was reviewed back in sixteen, and it only goes as far as actually twenty, is that right?
It's, it's actually, the process has started already.
Let's see. A lot of talk about, uh, finance versus, uh, fees versus taxes and revenues. The, the takeaway there was that people are much more willing to line up for fees. They understand, hey, it's a very narrowly focused, uh, I provide money and in exchange for this service or this deliverable from the city. Taxes can be very nebulous, and people don't necessarily see the benefits of it. So, the, the takeaway, the best practice was to go ahead and review your fees on a, a, a very recurring basis. Understand what you can get away, what you can take away, what you need to bolster, and on no less than an annual basis, you should be reviewing your fees. If you pave a road when it looks like it needs it, then you waited too long. And that comes down to the strategic plan, the goals, the objectives, the capital improvement plans, the failing plans, and we need to really make sure that those things are well aligned. If your revenues are not increasing, then they're decreasing. It's, it's not focusing on revenues at the expense or the blind eye or expenditures, but you really need to understand your revenues. And if you are not increasing your city's revenues, then they are essentially declining. Yes, charge impact fees. We're, we're seeing that more and more. I mean, we do work, and then we have to turn right around and do it again at the expense. And again, you know, understand what's the cost of doing business. We pave a road, we plan for it, we do it, and then right behind, somebody comes in to renovate a home or something, and we fill up the cost of having to paint that road. So, impact fees, I think that's something that we will probably pitch at our new list of advisement committee, and in the review, we'll probably have some good discussions on, on that sort of thing. Along with the fees, examine the options. You can stop doing something, you can reduce services, and the best practice is to reduce them incrementally. You can raise the courage fees, you can implement new fees, and, uh, or you just do a combination of a little bit of all of those things. Improvement is a continuing process, and then everybody's all for that. Vice Mayor, I miss anything? Any more yet?
No, I'll, I'll just, uh, echo what you said about term limits. Surprisingly, the Florida League of Cities is pro, uh, I'm sorry, against term limits. And I think the reason why, what, what they were telling us is that the longer someone is, is in office, the more influence that they can have. And, uh, they, they have better knowledge, and, uh, and they just get to know people. So, uh, I can't say we made a mistake, but, um, it was interesting to hear another point. Also, there were, uh, there were some comments made about when and where, uh, council members should appear. I'll go into that later in a work session, but it's, it's one of those things. If I don't bring it up in the next work session, I would like someone to remind me, because, uh, based upon their opinion, you may not necessarily be doing everything exactly the right way. Is that, is that a good way to say that? Other than that, I think you pretty much covered most of it, because the, the focus was really for food groups and that.
I'll just close with two comments. One is, yeah, the Florida League of Cities kind of sees that. I, I think we're off to a good start here with our, our new, uh, advisory committee, because what that, what that allows us to do is we continue to build continuity. We're bringing together a group of high-powered individuals with a, with a lot of diversified business skill sets and thinking. We've, we've built a good brain trust. It's a good starting place. We leave the decision-making with the elected officials, but we come and go, and with term limits, that's gonna be, possibly problematic, who knows? But we will always have that advisory committee to provide the, the continuity and the brain trust for us, and be up to, up to speed on all the issues, and have those things wired together and help cover that sort of thing. The, the last thought I have is that I highly recommend this training. The, uh, the first phase is the, the IEMO one, and that's a great foundation for, for elected officials. The Cities one oh one gives you a great foundation for understanding budgets, what fees are, taxes are, uh, capital improvement plans. You, you learn a language. It's really a laying up for learning the new language of municipal administration. And of course, all these just keep, continue to build on one another. So, for my fellow council members, highly recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. And council members have any questions? Any citizens' questions? I think that'll conclude that. Um, we move on to item seventeen, which is unfinished business, a very unfinished business. High unfinished business. Talking about term limits. Citizens unanimously passed term limits back in November of twenty twenty. And as of the last time I looked, it's still not enacted on our votes, under the charter. So, can I get a status of that, please?
Actually, Matt is gonna give you that tonight.
I'm asking for it now.
We just received our letter from the Florida Department of State and acknowledging that they had filed, um, our amended charter. So, once we received this, now it's effective.
Now it's effective?
Yes.
So, it's effective, uh, the date of that, what was the date of that letter?
Well, it's dated the twenty-second, but we didn't receive it until, um, I think it was the, it was postmarked the twenty-seventh. I, I think it was received on Thursday or Friday. I don't have the exact date.
So, can we all agree that it's like thirtieth or May first? May first is a Saturday, so May fifth.
Well, it's effective the date of the letter. We just didn't get the letter, so.
Okay. So, it's effective.
Yes.
So, starting in the next council session, then we will be operating under those rules. Now, the other charter amendments from the last election, the council election in March, those are pending right now, correct?
Those have been sent to MuniCode, so we're waiting for them to, uh, Those have been sent to MuniCode, so we're waiting for them to get that together and send us our proofs.
Excellent. That takes care of my unfinished business. Anyone else? Any citizens have anything that we missed? Okay, go to city attorney, Greg Riley.
No report.
City manager, Lynn Reeves.
Just quick updates, and probably some of you got it from the city news, but 7th and 8th Street, that project's complete. We'll be moving on to 12th and 13th for the design. There are still some outstanding things that they've got to repair, but the project in total is complete, and we'll be removing the dock. We're out for quotes for that because it's damaged. And then we'll reopen the boardwalk, or the bohrham.
The bohrham's going to be open irrespective of the dock, right?
Right.
After you do demolition, of course.
Right. Yeah, we've got to close now because we don't want somebody to go out on that dock and hurt themselves. As you all know, the paving is done. We're having a walk-through with the contractor on Thursday, so we'll discuss it. A couple of those issues that Jody brought up, and there's a couple of things the county's got to do with sewer rings, like at the end of 22nd Street. They've got to add a ring to the sewer cap, and there, you know, some negligible spots we've got to look at. The work session for the code, you kind of give us direction to start on that, so we'll get started on a few of those changes and bring them back to you. The checks went out last Friday for all the prepays, except four of them, and those were homes that were sold. So I've got the attorney looking into that. Who gets the money, the previous owner or the new homeowner? And we'll start the adjustments to the assessment, so the rest of the owners that paid in assessment will be getting a reduction. Except the council members, but we shouldn't get that reduction. No, I'm just kidding. So the amortization schedule's got to be approved by the bank, but I think that's just a formality. And I know everyone's heard about the American Rescue Plan and this $600, I think it's $78,000 that Beller Beach is supposed to give. We're following that. We still haven't got any direct clarification of what it can be used for and what it can't be used for. We submitted, we've got all the information. The Florida League's been trying to keep us abreast. We've got all the information, actually today we submitted to the Florida League, our DUMS number, our tax ID, the point person, and stuff like that. So they keep talking, May 15th, but we'll find out. And hopefully, May 15th, they'll give us more clarification because really, the answers are all over the place. A lot of the example state, I think is getting like $23 billion. They plugged it into their budget. Well, what can we use it for? Can we use it for infrastructure? Can we use it for things which would help the city? So we'll find out his more detailed comments, but I just wanted to give you the update. We've done our due diligence, and we're in line for the cash if they're going to give it to us. I'll talk to the contractor, Wright. I don't have any, to my knowledge, there's no reservation for Beller Shore for this use of this building. So I will tell you that. In the past, I will tell you that any government agency that's asked to use our facility or vice versa, we give it to them complimentary. We've never charged another government agency for that. And I think that's everything. Someone has a question?
Will you address those, you don't have to do this now, but will you address the other comments that John Hanzig and Debbie Mall had directly with them?
Yeah, I'll talk to Wright, and I'll see if I can get a copy of Debbie's synopsis. That way I can make sure I cover everything.
Yeah, Frank and Dave, guys.
The dock on 7th Street, the removal, are we going to remove the dock? Because the dock's in good shape. Can that be removed from its pilings and placed someplace, or are we going to demo the whole thing?
Well, the pilings are in bad shape, and part of the dock's broke underneath, so we're just going to remove it. And we have some estimates, and we're put an estimated number in the budget for next fiscal year to replace it. And at the same time, we'll start maybe a savings thing like we've done with other things in the city, so we don't get hit so hard.
Probably a little bit of a dumb question. I don't, I'm not a proponent or a proponent of strikes, but is there any plans on putting any kind of lines or anything on our streets? I don't know if it needs it, but.
The only place.
It's not weird looking right now.
Well, it's because it's black, because it's new. The only place that there's a requirement is the bridge, and we, we're going to let the asphalt appear a little bit before we do that, because FDOT inspects that bridge, and we have a bridge report. Every time, every other year, they come out with something, and we've got some work we'll have to do on that bridge, but it's.
That's probably where it's.
Yeah, you had the curb lines, and you had the center line on the bridge.
Okay. And also, how did the island in the cul-de-sac reconstruction, how did that work out?
They've already broken. Piece out, but we'll get that taken care of. I think we can re-patch it. We're going to keep cones around for a little longer. They drove over the back.
Was it too soft?
Too fast. I mean, I mean, we had cones there, and they drove over the cones. So usually concrete's usually about a 28-day cure before it really gets hard. And of course, this didn't get a 28-day secure before they drove through the cones. They took a chunk out on the edge, about, probably about that big. But it's done, and hopefully it has some effect with the neighbors that we're concerned about.
All right, thank you.
I have something.
Yes.
Question, two questions, actually. On this budget, I just happened to see the tennis courts, did they go over budget?
No, it went under.
Okay. Because is the year-to-date actual, was actually out versus the budget, or am I reading this wrong?
Oh, there is a, the 20,000 that was rolled over was not put in here. So it's actually under.
All right. And then second, kind of going back to what Deborah Mall and Hanzig were saying about the sheriff, at that Zoom call with the sheriff, I asked him to give us an estimate of what Beller Shore uses versus what we do, so we can see, still, it's never gone back to us?
Well, I got some information back, and I need to find out what numbers are right with, because I got something back from the sheriff. And currently, we get a credit of $35,000. And $35,093. And that's based on population. And they're using the pre-used population, which sort of benefits us, but, but in any case. And then they did a study by calls for service. And they gave me 562 calls in the city of Beller Beach, and 25 calls for service from Beller Shore. I need to, because Mrs. Mall told me something differently. They did tell me that, and this was verbally, that a lot of the calls that are made are from our residents, even though they're in Beller Shore. So they're, I guess they're calculating this, you know, I guess somebody's in the parking lot, somebody calls, you know. And if that happened, if they went by the calls for service, we'd only get a credit of $22,000. And if we look at the crime factor, and I don't know how they accumulate these percentages, but we'd only get a credit of $21,000. I will tell you that I would, you know, we'll talk to the sheriff some more, because what Mrs. Mall said, I want to understand what these numbers are based on what she said. And then the other question, what if we say we want our full-time sheriff, which means our current contract would go up $35,000, and it would only be devoted to us? And where this part-time sheriff for Beller Shore would go to could be picked up by one of the other cities or what have you. So that's, that's another option, if we're concerned that we're spending. But you have to remember that all sheriffs go both places. As an example, if we get a call here, sheriff from Beller loves to come here as a backup. So, you know, it's kind of how the system works. It's, we're getting more police presence than one sheriff's deputy in a lot of cases.
I like it that. I think it goes back to, well, they get 45 minutes a day or whatever shift, but they're actually using two hours, then they need to pay for it.
Right. And we can tell the sheriff if that's what the council wants to do.
Well, that's what we need to figure out. Like, what are they actually, I mean, if it's 50 minutes, they're paying 45. If they get 50 minutes, okay, you know. But if it's substantial, if they're getting twice as much, so if they're being like buy one, get one free, essentially, that's, I'm not into that.
Well.
They're being, we pay.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the sheriff can come back and say, which he could, he can come back and say, we'll take them away from you, and you'll have your contract as it is. I can't tell you if that's what he's going to say, but that's a possibility. And then our contract would automatically go up, and that would separate us from Beller Shore completely.
And we're also not budgeted to go up that kind of increase, are we?
Pardon?
It's not in our budget to even go up that kind of increase.
Well, no, we'd have to do that in the next budget cycle, which is October 1st, because our current contract shows that in there.
No, what I think we need is options. If we stay how we are, if we separate, if they gain their fair share of what they're using, we need to have like those three options, and then we can make the.
Well, that's.
If they do nothing, but we need to have options and get, it's all about just gathering information, so we can at least appease the residents, because I agree with them. It's annoying if we're giving the sheriff to lease us with a baby's umbrella. And then I don't even think an umbrella or a hood on a chair is allowed, because that's still a shade. So I mean.
Yeah, like I said, I'm just giving you some information that was provided by the sheriff. So he calculated it in how we would pay, and he's willing to calculate it, you know, any way you want it. I mean, that's, that's what he's basically told me. So he's saying, if you want to calculate it by calls, then this is how, you know, they'll have to provide something that says how many calls are made by Beller Shore, and how many calls are made by Beller Beach, which according to this, he told me it was, it came from their fiscal bureau, and he said there were 562 calls by Beller Shore and 25, or no, 562 by Beller Beach and 25 by Beller Shore.
They don't have to take any consideration when they're patrolling the beach and spending seven, 10 minutes telling the citizens to take down their baby's umbrella, even though nobody called on that, that's still part of the time. So, I mean, I think those numbers are not a fair representation of what's actually happening, if you take all of the aspects in. And that's what I want to know, is how much of that 45 minutes is being used on umbrellas? Or how much of it is being used for Beller Shore's interests versus ours? Or how much more do they get?
Well, I'll ask you further, and ask you, you know.
Including the beach patrols that aren't necessarily from a call, because they're supposed to be patrolling the beaches every once in a while, is that my understanding? Or do they go out there when someone complains?
I think they have a directed patrol maybe once a shift or something. I mean, we don't have any, I don't assign a directed patrol for our beach unless I have an incident like somebody calls and says, hey, that dog's on the beach at 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning. So I will ask the sheriff to do a directed patrol of the beach for that for, you know, a week or two, just to see if there is actually happening on a daily basis. Because, because I do hear, you know, from various people.
I've seen Beller Shore residents watch their dog on the beach. I mean.
You have to be very careful with dogs walking on the beach, because there's only a couple of questions that a deputy can ask them when it comes to, if Johnny says it's a service animal, you can't ask him to produce anything that he says it is. So that's, that's part of the law, you know, again. It's kind of like the bicycles, the electric, bicycles are electric. Our ordinance says we have.
That's, that's, we can't have. Beller Shore resident with their dog painted out the beach, sorry.
Well, like I said, that, that's, that's, you know, law enforcement has to ask those questions, but there's only a couple they can ask. I don't know, Sheriff Sarge, could I ask him, but maybe he can tell you.
We have time. Come on up. You'd like a sergeant.
Good evening again. There are limited questions that we can ask out there. I'm not going to try to regurgitate what it is right now, because I'd have to go out and look at the specifics of it. But he is correct, there are two questions because of ADA regulations. So when we go out there, they don't have to produce, we can't ask them to produce any type of identification that the dog is a service animal. So we can ask them, I believe, what it is, don't quote me on this, is what specific function does the dog perform? And they can tell us what it is, and we have no way of knowing anything other than that. So again, we are, we are limited on what we can ask out there when it comes to certain, dogs on the beach, and that applies to all the cities.
Do you find that you're spending a lot of time patrolling the beach for shade ordinance purposes?
Well, you're asking the wrong sergeant on that, because I work in the evenings. I come in at 6 o'clock at night, so I don't know.
So the answer's no for you.
I don't know what day shift does out there.
Is there any way you can find out? Is that information that we can formulate as far as like, if he spent seven minutes, 10 minutes, 12 minutes during the day on a Saturday or whatever, saying, take your baby's umbrella off the beach, or?
I have no idea of how they can calculate the exact time that's out there. I did hear, obviously, discussion about the deputies doing their beach patrols, and there are directed patrols that deputies do have to go out there at least once a shift. However, what I will say, the deputy on my shift, he will start at a specific location. I don't know where that is. And he will patrol from the northern, northern end of the city all the way down to the south. So that also would include Beller Beach. He doesn't just specifically patrol Beller Shore.
Of course.
All right. Are you saying that if it's a service animal, it doesn't have to have any markings on it? Like a best paperwork that says that this dog is a service animal?
All I can tell you is what we are as law enforcement are limited on the questions we could ask. We have not been told that they have to have any type of identification that identifies them as a service animal. We can only ask two questions.
So if the person that has the dog, and I love dogs, I'm one of the biggest dog lovers. I'm a volunteer at the Dallas County Animal Shelter. But I never brought my dog to the beach. And I see these dogs on the beach with a 16-foot lead. I can't see that being a service animal. I see them with no leash.
Okay, well, then we can get into other regulations, I guess, when it comes to leashes in that sense. But if we're talking about dogs on the beach. In, in that sense, well, if we're talking about dogs on the beach and they say it's a service animal, we can only ask certain questions, specific questions and we can't go outside of that.
So you can't cite them and they don't have the, uh, the next step would be to produce that this dog is a service animal?
Well, I'm sure there are law enforcement officers out there that will cite and then I guess you could go the route of case law and everything like that. But common sense, hopefully we'll overrule that and then go based on what you're required to do.
Because, I'm afraid of beach, Beller. I only really see the sheriff patrol the beach on the weekends. So I've been for a long time today, they seem to patrol. So I have spent as much time each spend with Beller Shore's department, Monday through Thursday and Friday, it's very...
Okay, your weekend will get hotter.
My third question. Just curious, uh, because of our relationship with Beller Shore and contractual, the relationship we have as far as police enforcement goes, do you think that there's ever been a time where you were unable to fulfill your obligation to the city of Beller Beach because of Beller Shore?
No.
If, um, if we were to separate the contract and we were to pay more and still contract with Pinellas County, would our level of service increase at all?
I think that's outside of my scope to even answer that question. All I know is that as a law enforcement officer, I come out and I bring, I, I try to provide the best quality service that I can. As a supervisor, I reach out outside, as was discussed earlier, I will reach out. I will respond if necessary as a backup, or if they're busy, I will be the one to respond, if not the corporal, other deputies around the area. I really don't want to respond to that question, because it's outside my scope.
That's, that's fine. Lastly, if, if the sheriff's department was unable, unable to fulfill their obligation because of lack of manpower, would they call in someone else to help?
I, I would think that that's a, that, that would be a, nearly a disaster for that to happen, because the resources available to us are plenty. We will call deputies from wherever we have to come and assist, whether that be from North County, whether that be from over in Pinellas Park area. It, I can't see something like that happening.
Thank you very much.
Mike, uh... A couple of questions. You, you know, you made a statement about how you're patrolling, you pull patrol from the north end to the south and, and I've got, you know, you, you kind of painted a picture in my mind. It all kind of blurs together, doesn't it? I mean, it's, you're patrolling an area, but I mean, you don't see the demarcation between Beller Shore and Beller Beach, you're, you're just in the beach area kind of area, aren't you?
Well, I myself don't go out there, but I'm assuming my deputies do. They don't draw a line in the sand that says that we're going to stop at 19th Street and we're going to turn around and come back south, they just drive the beach.
So, so administratively, I know you guys keep logs, they're into shift, you gotta fill out the paperwork and stuff. Is that, is your log detailed enough to break down whether or not, hey, I did a, a house check for Beller Shore or I did a house check for Beller Beach? I mean, are the logs detailed enough that somebody could go back and audit it and say, "Okay, well, actually, you spent this much time working Beller Shore versus Beller Beach"? Are, are the logs detailed enough for that?
Well, there are detailed logs for specific events. So in other words, driving the beach and asking somebody to remove a shade structure as they're driving along the beach, there should be a log of that if they're pulling the number for the ordinance violation itself. However, if it's nothing more than in passing, please take down the structure and then they continue driving. House checks, directed patrols, those will be logged.
I know those are official probably department documents. Do we have visibility on, on your logs or at the end of the shift? Do we get a copy of any of that, so we, no?
Point of information, Councilman. I witnessed on weekends, again, the sheriff goes as far as 28th Street, Indian Rocks Beach, makes a U-turn and comes back. So we got, and then there's another shift that patrols up in IRB, you know, up to 28th Street. I can't see how far down they go, they keep going into Beller Beach, but I know 28th Street will keep making U-turns.
Okay, that would be clarification. So yes, we have deputies that patrol the city of Indian Rocks Beach and obviously a deputy that patrols Beller Beach and Beller Shore. So that deputy would not go into Clearwater as a matter of routine, nor would that deputy go down into Indian Rocks Beach or vice versa as a matter of routine.
No, no, I, I understand that clarification, I understand that.
Thanks.
Council, do you have any other questions for the sheriff? We're on City Manager. Sheriff, thank you for helping clarify things and getting us information. Back to you.
That's it.
Okay, that's it. We now move to the City Clerk. And before we move to the City Clerk, it's what we read before. You get a chance to read it, but we did a proclamation and it's the 52nd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week from May 2nd through May 8th. And it's really to honor all the work that professional clerks do for all the cities. And of course, we're honoring Patty Gentry as part of that. So I'll be the first to say thank you for everything that you do for the city and you did a wonderful job and I'm glad to have you. So congratulations on this. And the Mayor's Council has invited all the clerks to join us for lunch on Wednesday, so hopefully you can make that, because they want to, first time they've ever done it, to honor all the clerks for all their work, so hopefully you can join us for that. But let me say thanks first, then I'll turn it over to you and I'm sure the rest of the council, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, no, I have no other comments, but thank you.
I would like to thank Patty for all the help, all the assistance she's provided over the last few years. Honestly, I, I think our hands would be tied without you. You are invaluable to this city and I really greatly appreciate all you do.
Thank you very much.
Why don't you have time here? You've been out of guidance. I mean, I really appreciate all the help you've given us. It's running as a candidate to be on council. I know I heard you probably are afraid of not like emails, but I, I just want to thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Robin? Oh, really?
Patty, I just want to say, you know, you're absolutely amazing and we adore you and you do so much for everybody, so you know how I feel about you, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go, Robin, less than you black, because I know everybody wants to speak. Robin, go ahead.
Patty, you know, we love you, you're awesome. I couldn't have done this without you. Um, I love how you always know all the answers to my questions and you always have a smile on your face. It's always such a joy to see you, because you're always happy and smiling. So thank you for everything you do, we really appreciate you.
Oh, thank you, you're welcome.
Russell?
Just echo the same comments that everybody has made. Patty, we're so lucky to have you, thank you for what you do and the smile on your face.
Oh, thank you.
And done?
Keep up the great work.
Thank you very much.
Lynn, Reedson, Fred Riley, if you wish.
Yeah, Patty keeps me straight most of the time. We're trying to keep you, each other straight.
Yeah, that's one of my...
But one thing I did forget to mention, Patty does a lot of work in, uh, she put out your latest edition of the City News and that's a new thing she's doing. So, you know, she's editor of repertoire along with the website. And we did forget to mention Patty's going to be on vacation the last two weeks of May.
Yes.
If we have any meetings, I guess I'm your City Clerk.
We're not, we're not gonna make a big proclamation.
I was gonna say, there goes the city.
Well, I'll just, uh, basically say the same thing everyone else did. It's many times as I've worked with her, she's exceptionally pleasant and she does one thing that I, I very much appreciate. Every time the orientation is how do you solve a problem? And that is absolutely vital from a City Clerk and I'm very appreciative of, appreciative of you.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Patty. Citizens, anything? We know how you feel, but go ahead. Matt Martin?
Yeah, um, it's...
Mark, you gotta, you know what, just so they can hear you, gotta have to come up.
Will do.
Lynn, when we redo this, we should have a microphone that like, he shouldn't have to come up. You know, that should be something out there, just the phone, go ahead.
Uh, Mark Goldman, 22nd Street. I've known Patty for a long time now and, um, in my business life, I've employed a lot of folks. But I've never been honored to have an employee that does as much for folks with a smile on her face as Patty does. Not only is she intelligent about any question and can answer anything you ask her, nothing seems to be beyond her struggle and she has those answers. Your emails are returned, your phone calls are taken. I think we're just, as a city, we're blessed to have her and I hope you are here for a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Goldman.
Thank you. Anyone else, John Hanson?
John Hanson, 22nd Street. I echo what everybody else has said. I've only been a resident for about five or six years. I've been involved in a few things with the city and so forth. But it's like every time I either come into the building or I've emailed Patty, she's always had the right answer, always in a timely fashion. And I really had a surprise a day or so ago. She sends me an email out of the clear blue sky as a reminder of tonight's meeting. I, I have it, even though I do periodically get CRS, I do know that the first month of us, it's a federal holiday, we're having a meeting. And she also had the graciousness to include the agenda packet. So I had an opportunity to peruse it. Patty, outstanding, you rock lady.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Patty, again. All right, go to City Council Comments this month, we begin the race vote.
I don't have any comments to make.
Leslie Natera?
No comments.
Mike Dunn?
Couple of quick ones. Congratulations to the newly selected members of the advisory committee, member control. Great, great, thank you. Interesting that the mayor brought up the podium back there, because as a best practice typically a lot of, and back us up on this Victor, I mean, you see all the different council chambers. Typically, the podium is backed there by the citizens, does that make sense? And along with that, I'm looking at all these wires here and maybe it's time to join the 1990s. You have no Bluetooth on some of this stuff and wireless and that point. It's probably there, because that's where the connections are, the wires and stuff like that. Just to show a hand in the back, how's the sound quality is an improvement? So that did work out well. One last issue is, uh, just a recommendation, uh, best practices possibly taken under advisement for, for future sessions is we call on the city attorney to sum up his comments or whatever and it's the only chance for us to get some visibility as to future actions. So what, what I would recommend or ask as a best practice for future sessions is just a summary of action items that you're possibly taking away from the meeting. You know, I've got a consensus here, these are the action items I'm taking for, for future work and billable hours more than anything. So it just takes a, takes 30 seconds, 60 seconds on to say, yeah, I've got this for action, I've got this for action, I've got this for action. And these are the deadlines and the billable that I expect to give you. This is the deadline for, that's all I ask, thank you.
Thank you. Frank Baker?
Yes, uh, last week, uh, we all received an email from the City Manager about, uh, he's a citizen, just a visitor, about some beach problems, navigation of waters. It's been one of my concerns, it's been a concern of a few of my neighbors. From First Street, Beller Shores to 16th Street, buoys were removed. I went to the City Manager and he says there's really no requirements that you can have that a buoy. So I looked into it a little bit further, I went to the county commissioners. Back in 2002, there was a permit issued for 33 buoys. And they're not just buoys, I mean, we have a coastal man here that probably tell you more than I know about buoys, but these are safety buoys. And they have idle speed, no way going up and everything like that. Somewhere, somehow, they will be removed up to 16th Street. And the boats come in at higher a speed, it's dangerous. I don't want to get into litigation that the town, the city's facing right now when someone has slipped and fell. But this is a hazard for a litigation problem looking right at us in the face. Now that this person that used the city email that went out to everybody, it's a public record. So the original permit in 2002 was issued by the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. I spoke to them today. They're not sure there was ever a rescinding of that permit. They're looking into that and I'll get back to you on that. But it clearly says it's a safety issue. Now, I can't see 18 years later, with more people coming to this area, that we would reduce safety. So I really think we should look at this, because it's a permit that was issued, it was a joint permit, Beller Shores and Beller Beach, 33 buoys. Right now, there's about 17 buoys and only one in Beller Shores. So I think we should look into that and I think we should address it before somebody gets seriously hurt.
Is it possible, maybe, do you get, if you get that to Patty, maybe get the copy of that out to us? That, uh, what you're finding there?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
I'll send it to her.
Great, Joe distributed it, perfect.
Mayor?
Yes.
I can kind of speak to that. Back at that time, just so the council knows, yes, the cities at that time went together and bought the buoys. Beller Shore paid for the installation of theirs and over time, no one really tore them out. They just break away and build somewhere else and pick them up later. Uh, and, uh, they opted not to put them back. We actually just replaced a bunch of our buoys in the last 12 months, because the permit is there, so periodically we go around and add buoys, you know, because they break away and disappear and, uh...
Actually, and the permit speaks of them breaking away, disappearing, damage run over, which they need to be immediately replaced. And that's my question, they haven't been replaced since, uh, what's that, four years now?
Well, some of those buoys have been known longer than that, I'm...
Well, I, I really didn't, I mean, it's 33, they got a longitude, latitude, then they had to use a little bit more. I think we can go and get variants and say, hey, put one at Third Street, put one at Sixth Street, put one at Ninth Street, just to keep the boats out. Because if you ever go on the beach at Sixth Street or 12th Street, you can watch it, make a, at 12th Street, they'll make a left-hand turn, they'll come flying in. 28th Street will make a right-hand turn, they'll come flying in. And I've had them come right up, I, I've got pictures I can show you, I mean, I've got pictures sent. It, it's, it's a mess and it's just, and especially with the water seats. They come in at a high rate. And it's not in Beller Beach, it's not in Indian Rocks Beach, it's just, I mean, there's 16 buoys.
So in my hearing, you want us to check about putting buoys at those three locations?
Oh, I don't know if you can get, we'd have to, I guess, get a variance first to see if we can get a longitude, latitude to the three locations. I guess, what would the cost be for the locations?
Well, no, the, the buoy companies, we just give them what's on the permit and they go for them.
Well, if the current permit is enforced, there's 33 buoys that have to be in place and it's not, it's only 17 now.
Right, that's the ones in Beller Shore. Beller Beach has, Beller Beach has their buoys.
But isn't that there for Beller Shore?
Yes, it is.
So we don't have much to say, right?
No, it's a joint permit.
It was a joint permit, I didn't know that.
But if they're electing not to replace, do we, I, I guess we have to look at it, but if, you know, we have taken the permit jointly, if they're saying, hey, we don't want to do this, I don't know if we have any right to tell them, yes, you have to, probably don't.
The permit does.
Permit says?
Yeah, you have to be replaced.
Okay, then, yeah, let's get this out and let's all take a look at it, including Detective Rick Riley.
So are you saying that the permit is lifetime?
Yeah, for the most part, the permits, the buoys, you establish a map and you pick the spots you want and then you submit that.
and then you submit that to the Florida Fish and Wildlife and they approve for the permit. If you add buoys, you have to update it, but for the most part, they're lifetime. I don't know that there's any requirement that, and, you know, I'll have to look back on the permit. I looked at it recently, but I don't know that there's any requirement that you have to put them back. But we do it, because we have an ordinance that says 100 yards from the shoreline. It's a safety zone, and you can't do that. Same in the Intercoastal, we do them there too, so.
And so does Beller Shore, it has the same, just about the same wordsmith language in there. It's 100 yards from the shoreline, and this Fish and Wildlife says, well, without a buoy, how do you...
Right.
Control it? And when you talk to the sheriff's department, they said, yeah, it does look like it's within 100 feet, but how do you control, you know, there's nothing there to warn the boater to get out?
Well, we'll get some more clarification. I mean, let's follow up on this one. I mean, let's at least look into it and see where we're at for safety. Anything else, Frank? Okay, thank you. Robin?
No comments.
Ed Gaddis?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm also good. So our next, we don't have a scheduled meeting. We have a work session that we're planning for this month at this point. It's open?
It's open. That's why I made the comment that it's going to be on vacation.
Right, so 2 p.m. turn is probably not going to happen, most likely, okay? We do have a park and rec board meeting on May 12th, Wednesday, May 12th, at 3:00 p.m. here. So that's it. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still adjourned.
I want to tie 3 p.m. Well, Frank Banker, we just want a vote in favor?
Aye.
Close. We're adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thanks for coming.